Let me do that. Let me ask that question.
Hello? Hello? I can hear me.
Hello?
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 Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Scognu?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan? Oh, you took your microphone?
I don't have a microphone. Hold on. Hold on. Hold on. So sorry.
One, two. One, two. One, two. Test. Okay. We're back on the record. We've had a roll call. Again, I want to apologize to everyone here this evening. The technical difficulties that we've had due to the storm, which yesterday took out a major component in here that we couldn't broadcast. So we're working under a little disabling conditions, but thank you all for your cooperation. I want to make an announcement at this point. The rules of the board are the meetings are from 7:30 to 10:30 with testimony to stop at 10:00 and with the 30 minutes remaining for public portion. The problem is tonight we went way over on the last application. Those are the people that are sitting in here. In front of us, we have one more application and then two more residential homeowners with matters. I'm asking them to, if they would agree to not come on tonight because I can't fit them in. It's just, we're going to go too long. They've been kind enough to accept so they don't sit here for another 45 minutes. They've sat here all night and I truly apologize for that. But I sometimes have no control over the testimony and the length of the testimony. They have agreed to both be put on in our very next meeting on 10/16. I tell you, when I'm telling you, you're putting, you're going to be put on first. There's one person coming for a vote. Then your two applications will be next. So we start at 7:30. I can anticipate you being on before 8:00. So please, I'm going to try my best to get this other application out of the way tonight. And I don't mean to diminish your application, Mr. McGowan. We'll work around it. Once again, I want to thank you as residents of the community. Obviously, we're all residents here. I know that you were very patient tonight. I can only offer my apologies, but I can't offer you that these applications that we put on. I'm going to read them into the record right now. 17-2025Z, that's Anthony Frankinero. That's the physical location. It's 49 Second Street in Old Bridge. And the other one is 19-2025Z. That's Nathaniel Cruz. That's 259 Ambway Road in Mount Awon. And those applications will not be heard this evening. They are being moved to October 16th. There'll be no further notice. And I, once again, thank you very much for your patience, both of you, okay? And Mrs. Frankinero and Cruz. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Having said that, we're going to move forward, I hope. This is, ladies, we're being picked up on the recorder. 06-2025Z, it's 2G Poor Farm LLC, Old Bridge Point. This is blocks 5,000, 5,005, 5,006 lots. 20, 1-9, 1-29. Lucy Drive, Lola Drive, and Poor Farm Road for solar lighting. They're seeking amended preliminary and final subdivision. Robert McGowan, representing the applicant. Mr. McGowan.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Robert McGowan. I'm here representing the applicant, 2G Poor Farms LLC. A housekeeping question. Now that all this has been restored, do I still need to produce a transcript for tonight?
Counselor? I don't, are we back on live cable?
Yes, we are.
I can't promise that it will go through.
If a transcript is needed, we will have.
But what I've also been told was we were going out over YouTube Live. So that would be there.
Okay.
Am I correct, Jake?
We will have, we will have all of the audio included on YouTube tomorrow.
All right.
To you, sir.
I appreciate then you willing to stay whatever we owe you.
I was here and if you need help, I'll help.
I thank you so much.
All right. We'll just give a brief moment for the stenographer to, are you okay? All right, okay. Okay. Goodbye. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for being so kind.
All right, Mr. McGowan.
All right.
You can proceed.
The, the application, of course, was here through the last couple of years. At this point, the subject of the application is a completely, well, not completely finished development. There's still the final site improvements. The road has to be paved. Some cleanup issues have to occur, but all the homes have been sold. There were 35, there were 35 homes altogether. Of them, 17 were duplexes, and then there was a single. Included in that, because of the incredibly insistence of your planner, there are in fact seven affordable homes that were sold to the people. And if you go there, you would intentionally, because of the intent of how this was approved, you would have great difficulty telling what's affordable and what was market. So this is quite a unique development, and I think it has gone well, and I think it is, you know, a great improvement for the area. What happened in the transition was that as it was being developed and they were working with Jersey Central Power and Light and trying to analyze the costs, both of the construction and the after-costs, because the roads are private. They are not going to be maintained by Old Bridge. They're going to be maintained by the homeowners association. As a result, the lighting is also going to be paid for by the homeowners association. So as the developer analyzed the installation costs and then the eventual costs, it became clear that the eventual cost, and as we know, energy rates have continued to climb and in fact is kind of a political issue in the state at this point as the advancement of those rates. With the solar, the homeowners association will realize substantial savings. So with that, it was redesigned to do solar. It was an oversight and an unintentional error that it never cleared through engineering here in Old Bridge. Our engineer went through it, redesigned it, went back and forth. Everyone agreed on it. There was some confusion as to who was going to submit it, and I think each thought the other was, and it didn't get submitted. And so as a result, where maybe it could have been an engineered approval with further consideration, and because we do have a variance in the height, our poles are 19 feet, where only 18 feet are allowed, we are now before the board for this variance. Waiver. I'm sorry. Waiver. I'm sorry. For the waiver. So that's what we're here for tonight, is to talk about the lighting, to see how it impacts the community, see how it lines up, whether it serves the purposes. Do we have any other deviations from what the code requires, and how does this fit into the community? What I'd like to have is John Vincenti sworn in. He is representative of the applicant and the owner, and provide a little further background for you.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm and tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and spell your last.
My name is John Vincenti, V-I-N-C-E-N-T-I. I'm employed by Level 10 Development, the developer of the property. I am the director of development. I'm also a licensed engineer and planner, although we have our engineer here to give the expert testimony, really just to give some of the background, in fact, facts associated with this.
You testifying as to?
I'm testifying to as the circumstances around, around the lighting design.
Okay. So you're a professional engineer and you're a professional planner?
Yes.
But he's mostly testifying as a back witness.
I understand. I understand. We'll recognize his credentials, certainly. He's testified before this board before.
Yes, he has.
So as Mr. McGowan indicated, the community is pretty well built out. The roads are paved. The base course is in. We anticipate final landscaping, final paving, all completed by November. When we first anticipated and made our application four to 35 homes, we proposed that the roads would be publicly owned, publicly maintained by the township. And during the staff reviews, we made the switch that the improvements would be owned by the homeowners association. The original anticipation was that, like any public right of why JCPN L being the local utility, they have a street lighting program where the utility would come in. Essentially, the developer pays JCPN L to put the infrastructure in. It's a wired system, and basically, the street lights are then paid directly and billed directly to the municipality, and the township pays the bills. In the case of a private property or private development, JCPN L's policy, and it changed a number of years ago, they will not entertain that type of arrangement, even though the look of the community may suppose or presuppose that these are typical residential roads. Because they are maintained by a private entity, JCPN L wants to kind of get out of something that they don't make money on. And in this particular case, we performed an outreach to JCPN L. They made it clear that they had no intention of entertaining the street program for this community. So we evaluated a cost, long-term and short-term cost of operating the lights, maintaining the lights of the homeowners association as opposed to, with two different options. One is the traditional wired, hardwired option, where the homeowners would be billed on a monthly basis, just like you get your bill for electric at your house. And we evaluated also the alternative of solar. The benefit of the solar is really towards the monthly nut that the homeowners association would have to pay. There is no, there's no electric bill. They're 100% solar operated. The long-term savings is substantial when we performed the financial analysis. And the analysis that we performed was based on 2003 rates. We performed it in 2004, and as you all well know, the monthly rates that everyone in the state pays have escalated dramatically. As homeowners typically, we're seeing 20 to 25%, 24%. But the street lights accounts are commercial in nature, so there would be even a larger escalation to the homeowners for this. The cost to the developer are essentially, are essentially the same. We had to pay for the lights. We had to install them. The actual infrastructure costs of the underground installation is not necessary with the solar. There's no, there's no wiring associated with it. The upfront costs, though, are a little bit more expensive to the developer. And we felt the long-term benefits, though, really weighed very largely on the small incremental upfront costs. And we're seeing our homeowners benefit, quite frankly. We're going to turn over the association. We have probably a $50,000 budget surplus that the homeowners are going to, are going to get the benefit of with our reserve analysis that we did. And, you know, the idea is when we turn it, turn over the community fully, fully built, the homeowners have a good, good reserve. And the lack of paying JCPN L played a large part in that. So we're here for an amended site plan approval that really just memorializes the lights that we've, we've installed. As Mr. McGowan indicated, we had our engineer do an analysis of the lighting plan that we came up with respect to lighting intensities. For all intents and purposes, the illumination is equal to what was originally shown on the plan. And I think that's borne out and documented in the review memo that your consulting engineer prepared. The only real difference is the fact that these particular light fixtures are mounted higher than the 13-foot lantern style. We have a mounting height of what we believe to be 18 feet. The middle of the structure of the fixture is 19 feet above grade. To the top of the solar panel is an approximately, an additional three to, three to four feet above the 19 feet. Your ordinance puts the mounting height requirement at 18 feet maximum. So technically, we're seeking a waiver for that height. But we, we think the aesthetics associated with these lights are different than, than what you see. With your typical lantern style, we think they're a little stylish. The other benefit to these lights, quite frankly, is the luminaire is not really, real evident. With the lantern style, that light bulb is evident to the eye. This particular fixture has, has an LED that's mounted to the bottom, so the light is projected down. So if you're in the house on the second floor, you really don't see that, the light bulb visible. So even though it's a little bit higher, we do not believe that it is an impediment to the, to the visibility of the residents. As a matter of fact, we have gotten no comments, no complaints from our, from the residents in the community now. There were some questions in the review letter that dealt with why, why we did this. And really, it was twofold, because JCPN L wouldn't, wouldn't support the community and because of the cost savings generated to the homeowners association. There's a question with respect to how the energy is stored, how it's collected by the solar panel. So there, there are batteries. There's, there's a battery pack integral to the panel underneath, mounted to the panel. And that battery gets the energy during the day and then expends it during, during, during the evening hours when the light is working. There's no interconnection from one light pole to the other. Each one is all self-contained. There is a useful life of those batteries. It's a module that we, that is popped out and replaced. That replacement cost is all, was all built into the financial analysis that we, that we provided to the township when we made this application. That was, that financial analysis was required by Nicole Shapiro, and we provided that as part of the, part of the application. So the financial benefit is, as I've indicated, is significant. So question about the lighting of the tot lot. The tot lot is really not intended to be utilized after, after dusk. The lighting illumination levels in the rear cul-de-sac area are similar to, actually exactly the same as what was previously approved in the lighting plan. So in summary, I know Kevin, our engineer, is going to go through the other bulk issues in, in the review letter, but that's, that's the reason behind this and why we are here seeking the waivers and an amended site plan, dealing solely with, with the light, the lighting issues.
And because it is an amended site plan, we did give notice. Unlike the presentation before us, our people were all notified that we are doing this, and they obviously saw it. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vincenti. Mr. Dargi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a review memo dated, I just had it on my screen and it left me. One second.
July 28th.
July 28th. Thanks, John. Mr. Vincenti did provide some of the testimony we had requested. And I guess in the interest of brevity in the late hour, I'll just summarize our concerns. I did get a chance to speak to Ms. Shapiro earlier today about this application. Obviously, it's been, it's been a few months. We met out there back last spring. May actually have been early spring, I think, when we met out there.
Probably around February.
Yeah. Okay. Late winter. In any case, our, our concerns were, obviously, the lights were installed without, you know, without us knowing that the fixtures had changed. The concerns were the height of the lights, which the, the approved lights for this development were under, little under 13 feet. They were 12.75 feet height. It was more of a decorative light, light fixture that was, that was to be installed. That was the standard JCPN L light that Mr. Vincenti was describing. What is installed is, you know, quite a bit taller. The actual light element itself is about, mounted at about 18 feet. The fixture is about 19 feet. Then there's a solar panel and battery and everything that, that goes up to, I guess, about 21, 22 feet in height. The concern was the height of the element being near the second floor windows. The locations of the lights also is different, right, from where it was on the approved plans or, I'm sorry. It's, it is where they were supposed to be on the approved plans, but they do wind up being proximate to, to the, to the windows. And I guess you said you guys haven't got any complaints, right, John?
No.
But my understanding from Nicole is that she has received some concerns from some residents. I don't know if that's been conveyed to, to you or to Ryan Holmes.
It, it has not. I'm the president in a homeowners association. I've conducted the meetings, and not one resident has, has made any comments with respect to the lighting. The only comments we've, we've received from the community members are they want to look at the finances. And we've provided them with that.
Then the other concern that we had, and I was, I'm looking in my files to see if I can find the, the financial analysis that you referred to, because I didn't see it in my, my files here.
I noticed, I noticed that you did not address it in the items. I, I, I know that it was provided both digitally and hard copies, because I provided both personally.
Okay.
And that's, you know, it was, I think, conspicuously absent.
Yeah, well, it's not in our memo. Yeah.
I kind of figured you think, yeah.
Right. And that's, and I don't know that Nicole's seen it either, because her and I had this very same conversation today. And I know it's hearsay, but, but we had the same, same conversation today. The concern that we have, and just down to brass tacks, is HOAs, I've never met anyone, any HOA that is flush with cash, ever, especially 20, 30 years down the road. And our concern really is that these lights, the, the maintenance of the batteries and the fixtures, which happens throughout, and then eventually, there's going to need to be more of a wholesale kind of replacement of these, of either the batteries or fixtures. And our concern is that the HOA is going to basically be coming to beat down the township's door to take ownership of these lights and replace them. And that's something that we obviously are concerned with and we're trying to head off. And our thinking of heading that off was to make sure that there's an actual reserve. I'm glad you referred to the reserve, because, because that's our idea as well. You know, brilliant minds think alike. So, so we wanted to see what, what that reserve would be, right? Like, like, how much are we putting aside and designating specifically with a bright label that says, this is for these lights? Don't go beating down the town's door in 20 years.
So, so both versions of the, of the budgets and the reserve studies that we did had money in both budgets for lights. The issues of replacement, replacement of the light fixtures, the light posts, the infrastructure, the wiring versus the solar and the batteries was always in, the, the lighting was always in the budget from, from, from the get-go. The maintenance responsibilities were always in the HOA documents. Naturally, there are two different calculations associated with, with that because of the need to replace wires versus not needing to replace wires. The need to, to, to replace light bulbs is basically the same.
Right.
The poles is basically the same cost. The fixtures are very similar. The, the, there is a cost associated with, with the solar and the battery, and we took that into consideration in both budgets that were done initially when, when it was wired.
in both budgets that were done initially when it was wired and now when it's solar. The real big cost differential is the monthly nut paying those bills for electric, and that's what really, really makes the difference long-term. So when we met with, in February, it was very clear that that was an issue. And in the follow-up correspondence between the township engineer's office and our office, that was made pretty clear to us. And that's why we did provide the two different reserve analyses and budgets.
So I guess...
And we believe, you know, we've met that standard.
So the, I haven't had a chance to look at that reserve analysis, obviously, both, either the analyses. Initially, when the board approved the application here, I think the understanding was that JCPN L would be doing the, you know, maintenance and all that stuff. So I understand that you did the two analyses to demonstrate that, hey, listen, we intend now, since JCPN L's not in the picture, we either would install standard lights or these solar lights, and here's the difference between these solar lights and standard lights. So what I'm getting at is, either way, now we're basically approving or being asked to approve something where the HOA is going to be maintaining these lights, and we just need to see the analysis to make sure that there is, there's going to be money in 20 years or whatever to replace these lights if there needs to be. The only thing, in the interest of moving forward here tonight, is if the board acts favorably, I would feel comfortable if there was an agreement that if our office and the township engineer's office reviews this, and we find that there's a payment that needs to be made by the developer to sort of supplement, that you agree to that payment. And of course, you can always come back and say, you know, if we don't agree, you can come back to the board and argue your case later.
I would say, within reason, yes.
Well, yeah, everything's within reason, right?
And if we don't agree on the number, we'll come back.
Right.
The other thing that, you know, we know when these communities are transitioned to the homeowners association, there is a transition report that's done, and they look at the finances. Another thing that we did in running the association is we self-managed it and basically did not pay a third party to manage the association up until probably about four or five months ago. So there was a substantial savings associated with that. We did not pay ourselves to run the association. We're doing that with all our communities, especially upfront, because we know that the budgets are generally tight. That's another reason why we have a significant surplus in the account right now. That will be made available, turned over to the association. It's in a separate account. We collect reserves, okay? If there's a shortfall, we kick in from our own pocket to meet that budget, even though we're not spending it, so that when it comes time, you know, we know the HOAs are looking to be made whole at transition, and if we're transparent about it and the money's sitting in the account, there's less of a difficult transition, and that's what we're trying to avoid. Personally, I'm managing probably eight homeowners associations, president of the board of eight of our communities. I don't want to be burdened with eight transitions that become very costly and onerous, so it's in our best interest to make sure the money's there when the time is right to turn it over.
Yeah. I mean, I hear exactly what you're saying, and that all makes perfect sense. My only concern is when the HOA takes over, they see money sitting there, and they're like, oh, you know, we have money here. We need something that, and maybe this is written into your documents, we need to see it. We need something that says, hey, HOA's been advised, these lights are yours, and there's going to be a long-term cost.
It's in there.
And, I know, and I want to see it, because my problem is always, you know, it's human nature, you know, they're looking to cut their costs, they're looking to balance their budgets, and they're like, well, maybe our HOA fee doesn't have to be $120 a month, maybe it can be $90 a month, because John left us all this money. And so that's, you know, we want to make sure that there's some controls in place, because I know you see it on your end, and on my end...
John, you see it too.
What's that?
You see it.
Yeah, I see it on my end. And on my end, what I see is HOAs, at least, you know, a few a year, I'm sitting through township committee meetings where people come in to complain about their trash, the cost of their trash, the cost of their lights, the cost of their roads. Some HOAs don't even know that they are responsible for the roads, and, you know, their residents come into committee meetings asking for the roads to be repaved. So these are all things that probably go beyond this lighting issue we're talking about. But I just want to make sure that this lighting issue is addressed crystal clear in those documents and in the financial pro forma you're talking about.
The HOA documents were also submitted with the application.
Yep. I will review those as well.
Just like to add to that, the thought that while it makes sense to look that we've properly set it up, and we, and the budget that the developer has established is a reasonable budget, and it has appropriate reserves and so forth, there is no way that any of us can guarantee what the future homeowners association is going to do. I mean, your point, Rakesh, that they may look at, just like town councils sometimes look at, all of this money they have in reserve, and an election is coming up, and so we're going to, you know, not increase taxes this year, when really, a proper planning should say you should maintain the budget that you have. So all I'm saying is, we can show that we've set it up properly for the homeowners to be protected, and if they continue to operate in a proper manner and follow the guidance that we've given them, they should be in great shape. But we, none of us can control what they may do in the future.
I thought DCA was making homeowners associations establish budgetary constraints that they have to have enough money in order to be covering. Is it DCA or does the state enact something? I'm on a homeowners association. That's why I'm questioning that.
I believe it's the DCA.
Right.
And what they're requiring is, it might be annual or biannual, but it's what's called a reserve study.
Yes.
Okay, so the reserve study is not intended to account for your daily operations, but it's your rainy day, it's your rainy day fund, okay? And to tell you where we are with our reserve, our total budget is $69,000. That's what, that's what we collect on a yearly basis. I have a $25,000, $25,000 of that $69,000 budget is the annual reserve amount.
Contribution reserve.
That goes into a separate, separate account set aside for reserves. That's the rainy day. Now, you know, the intent is that's there for the long-term maintenance, which includes the paving here. It includes, you know, replacing the sand in the recharge basin. It includes the fence, replacing the fence around the detention basin. It includes the lights. It includes maintenance on the retaining wall in this community, includes things of that nature.
What I'm concerned with is, JCPN L is providing electric to everybody's home, correct?
Yes.
The poles that, did they put those poles? No, there was a new development, so you put the poles up.
Yes.
And JCPN L was sending electric to the pole for the street lighting only?
Yes.
Totally separate. Each homeowner gets their own bill for their own electricity.
Yes.
The HOA was going to share, was going to pay for the electric bill, correct?
The way, well, the way it was going to be set up, there would be separate meters that would power the light fixtures, and those, and the bill for those meters would go to the homeowners association as opposed to a straight bill that goes to the township. It's set up differently.
Up to the township.
If this was a municipal program, there's no meter, there's no consumption bill, there's a regular bill, the town is billed X amount per light pole in the community.
If the roadway was dedicated to the township?
Correct.
This roadway is not dedicated to the township. So therefore, the bill went to the HOA.
It would have, had we done a traditional electric.
I understand. I understand. What happens? Who's going to fix this stuff? The HOA is responsible, right?
Either way, in this community, either way.
Well, it can't be either way. The town's not going to do it.
No, no. We had an option to go with the hard-wired electric, but the municipality would not pay for the electric bill, and JCPN L would not be responsible for maintaining those utility poles, those lighting poles. That would fall on the homeowners association.
Right.
So we chose the solar option.
Okay.
And JCPN L was charging a commercial rate for providing that.
Well, whatever it may be, the town wasn't paying the bills. The HOA is paying the bill.
Correct.
Okay.
In the situation where the town is paying the bill and that light pole needs to be replaced, that's on JCPN L. They have to replace the wiring, they have to replace the light fixture, they have to change the bulbs, they have to, you know, that whole infrastructure is on them, and that's where it's a loss leader to them. It's not the initial upfront cost of the installation, it's the long-term maintenance to JCPN L. That's why they're getting out of the lighting business in privately-owned developments.
They're not going to sell lighting.
They're out of it. They will, in no community in New Jersey, if it's a private community, they will not entertain enrolling that community in their street lighting program.
They're not taking on anything new, you mean?
And that's been now for probably around 10, 12 years, something like that.
Well, they take care of ours. They change our bulbs.
That's because they, that predates their change in policy.
That's what I'm saying. This is something new coming forward.
Relatively new, yes.
What happens when this stuff breaks?
It's on the association.
It's on the community.
It's on the association.
And why is the necessity to take it from 18 to three or four foot higher, depending on?
It's basically the design of this particular solar fixture.
It needs to be higher to spread light?
That's the way it's designed. It's a lantern style, but the way, the aesthetics is not mounting it on top of a pole. It's kind of like got a gooseneck, and it kind of hangs, it's a totally different aesthetic type of look. It's a lantern, it's a more contemporary type of lantern design, and what that does is it allows that, the light bulb, the LED fixture, to be mounted flat, directed down, as opposed to if it was on top of a pole, then you have to have that, the light bulb actually visible in that lantern style, in the four walls of the glass.
So it's out of necessity that you did this, not just out of choice? The height? Because of the way it works?
It's because...
Just so the board can understand?
It's because of this particular fixture design, and that's correct, yes.
All right. And basically, you're here, you want the board to amend the plan to allow for this?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, they're asking for amended site plan to revise the lighting design, and then there's also design waivers that are associated with it.
Okay. Are you going to have another witness?
If the board has questions...
I'm going to see if the board does, but I'm saying you're going to have another witness.
We do have the engineer, if there are any questions.
Okay, well, let's go see if the board has any questions. Counsel, you have any?
How was the homeowners, that I'm assuming they're not in their homes just yet, or are they?
Yeah, they are.
They are. How were they notified about this dilemma?
So about this meeting, they were given a notice of it.
No, about the change of the, and were they, you know, was it explained to them that HOA, excuse me, and like he stated, you know, HOAs, I've had a HOA, I had a condo, and they're unpredictable, and was this explained to them? Because I'm sure they bought it thinking, oh, the township, the city light, yada, yada, yada.
From the get-go, the homeowners association documents were clear that the lighting was to be maintained and paid for by the association.
Okay.
Okay. So it was always disclosed, now, at that time, it was understood or contemplated that it would be electrical.
You were saying...
But it was not, it was understood by us or anticipated.
But you said that the township would pay that. So now you're saying the HOA?
No. So when we first came in with the application, we wanted it to be a township road. When the application was discussed and ultimately approved, it was made clear by staff that they said, no, the town does not want to maintain this.
Then you advised the potential owners?
It was reviewed and approved. Then what happens is, we create the homeowners association documents. This is before any marketing is done.
Okay.
Okay. The HOA documents say lighting is maintained and cost, the cost is borne by the residents.
Okay.
That information is disseminated, okay?
Okay, you put me at ease.
It didn't say hardwired electric lights, it says electrical lighting. There was no differentiation ever made between solar or hardwired.
They were pre-notified.
That it's on there, that it's on there.
Okay, thank you.
One of the requirements of selling homes in the homeowners association or condo association is you have to have a public offering statement that's registered with the DCA and which is made available to all the homeowners. All that information is in there.
So JCPN L will not come in there anymore?
No, absolutely not.
They don't even want to?
Nope.
They'll put in regular lighting?
No, not in this community, no.
Not at all?
Yeah, because it's a private roadway, that's the rub.
I got it, I got it, okay.
I just have a question for Mr. Dargi. So what if, like, we have a bunch of other town communities where they had an HOA and it's been dissolved?
Yeah.
Or it just dissipated? No one even, you know, some people moved in there and said, we've never even had an HOA when there was one. What happens then? Does it still fall back on this community, and our homes are clean?
Yeah, I mean, that's a legal question, not an engineering question.
DCA takes over.
But I'll defer to our attorneys on that, but the HOAs are difficult at times. That's the reason why my whole thing is to make sure it's crystal clear at this stage, what everyone's responsibilities are, and then, yeah, you just got to keep your fingers crossed that HOAs don't dissolve, right?
That's the only thing we can do is make it crystal clear at this point.
I would like it.
Yeah. Hope that when it does happen, if that does happen, that everybody's on the same page.
I think communities get taken over by DCA if they can't survive, correct?
I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that. You don't?
I have a couple of questions. I know what the answer is, they do.
I believe you, but I don't know.
I have a couple of technical questions. How long have the lights been up?
About a year, year and a half.
Do you ever run into problems where we've had three, four days of rain and the lights don't come on?
No.
No?
Nope.
That's what the batteries are for.
So the batteries last long enough?
And even though it's a cloudy day, you're still collecting energy through the cells.
How long can they go without that battery backup? Is it a week or two weeks?
I don't know if it's that long, but it's several days. I don't have the technical data.
But it hasn't been a problem.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Anybody else on the board, any questions?
No.
Mr. Dargi?
I don't have any more questions from Mr. Vicenti now.
Do you want to hear anybody else?
You know, Kevin? I just had a couple, I don't know if you had, I apologize, but...
Okay, let's do that.
And they're very, very, very minor technical questions.
We want to be right.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you state your name and spell your name?
Kevin Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-Y.
Kevin, you're the engineer who testified throughout this application, right?
He has testified before this... He has testified before, this board before, I recognize his credentials and his expertise.
Thank you.
So, the only, the only question I really have is, is regarding the illumination levels. I don't know if you had a chance to review our memo?
Yep.
The, the illumination levels are different, obviously, a little bit, because you're never going to get exactly the same, right? From, you had twelve and a half, or twelve and three-quarter foot tall, acorn-style fixtures, and you went to eighteen-foot LED fixtures, spread a little bit further apart. So, the illumination's going to be a little bit different. The, the question that I have, though, is the, the averages that we have, are, they're, they're identical to the ones before. Did you guys recalculate them, and they actually are identical, or is that just something that wasn't...
Yes, yeah, we did. We redid them, we modeled the fixtures, we modeled them at different heights to see what gave us that same level that was approved, and that's, answers your question of how we ended up at an eighteen-foot height. That's what gave us the equivalent lighting levels that were approved previously and how we ended up here.
So, you, you worked from the, those averages backwards to, to make sure that...
Yeah, we adjusted it, we started at fifteen, we were up at twenty-one.
Okay.
We found it at eighteen, gave us what was previously approved and consistent, which in our mind was an approved equivalent.
Okay.
Then the height comes up.
All right, perfect. Yeah, that was my only real question, because it seemed like, I was like, wow, that's, that's kind of amazing, but that's, if you start with that as your baseline and go from there, that's, that would work. All right, and then, let me just go down my list, I apologize. I think Mr. Vincenti gave most of the testimony that we were looking for, but...
I think the only other one was about uplighting on the site sign. There is no lighting on the site sign, so...
Okay, it looked like there were on the plan.
Yeah, we contemplated it, but there is no uplighting, it's not installed, it won't be installed.
Okay, perfect.
And then the other comments about adding or updating the plans with the road names, we have no problem with that.
All right. I think, I think that was it. Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have any questions for Mr. Shelley. I think the only thing left is, and I think Mr. Vincenti agreed to the, the one condition that I suggested, which is, Ms. Shapiro and I will review the, the financial analysis that, that the applicant prepared, and should we find that there's a lump sum that's required to, to, to sort of, you know, augment the reserve so that the lights can be replaced or, or repaired going into the future, the applicant agreed to that. Should we not come to an agreement, then the applicant would have to come back here to, to...
So, conditionally, you would agree to agree, and if you don't, you got to come back?
We'll come back. If we can't agree, then we'll have to come back to you, sure.
Let me see if the board members have any more questions from Mr. Shelley. Am I right? Have you done communities before with this lighting?
We're seeing, this particular light fixture, no. We're seeing this in a lot of other communities across the state. Same issue with JCPL about not coming into private developments.
Could you assure the board that this works and...
Yeah, they work. The, the light fixtures, as you look, great, they give a nice distribution, I think they're...
You're the professional, we're just the, we're just the...
I, I, I think, we see this type of fixture in a lot of communities. This exact one, they differ, there's a lot of options out there now, as opposed to just JCPL telling you, here's two acorn styles, and they've all worked pretty successfully so far.
Thank you. Mr. Darje, do you feel comfortable saying that it, it, we could safely agree to amend the preliminary and final with the condition that it's a...
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. I think from a technical standpoint, all the standards are met. The, the only issue is the, the long-term cost for maintenance, and we're, we're going to work that out according to the...
And this is already in, happening, so...
The lights are in, lights are in, and, yeah, functional.
You have anything else, Mr. McGowan?
No, I do not.
Anybody else have any questions of this witness or any witness? No? You want to sum, or you're good?
No, I, nobody else to say.
All right, board, you've heard everything, we've heard from the professionals, they're putting their licenses on the line, so they say it can work, and we should be okay to do this. Would somebody be in favor of amended major preliminary, and then we'll do final?
Chevalier, I'll approve.
Roll call, please, as to amended major preliminary.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes, with the financial.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes, providing the financial.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, with the financials.
Chairman Sullivan?
Uh, yes, the major preliminary. And now to amend it final, someone move it?
Testaverde.
I'm sorry, Chevalier and Testaverde.
Wait a second. Chevalier and Testaverde. Okay, ready?
Ready to go?
Yeah. Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Ms. Testaverde?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, your professionals, Mr. McGowan and yourself.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Board.
We didn't want to be here this long either, so don't feel bad.
Well, thank you.
All right, please leave. Not you, no. Doreen wants to leave, she's got to get to work. Having, nothing else, Mr. Darje, nothing for the township?